Everybody again, we are back in public session. And let's start with the pledge of allegiance led by Anita.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, to the free republic which stands one nation under God, and never again shall there be a doubt.
Okay, that was... So our first item on the agenda is a request to put a G O cash on town property, which is up near Alley Lane, which is off of North Street for anybody who doesn't know where that is. And it's really just a request from a family that they'd be able to do this. So I don't know if there are any questions or concerns? I don't see any, so is there a motion?
Question approved, if they're funding around.
They are. I think, Tom, you seconded it, is that right?
Yep.
All right, all those in favor, John?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Eric, can you just put the agenda up since I can't get it up on my screen right now? I know the next item is the consent agenda. So we are at our next item, which is a request to approve the use of the town common to acknowledge or celebrate Indigenous People Day. The applicant is Tom on behalf of the First Parish Church United, Monday, October 11th, from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Is there a motion to approve?
Question.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, Scott?
I have a question.
Hey, Andrea.
What?
John Cunningham is trying to ask a question. You have to pick up.
I'm sorry, I can't, the problem is, I can't see him. He's like, you know, I've got Dan in my square as opposed to John. So I mean, is there any way you can change it so I could see John?
John, you need to just talk.
Okay. My question is concerning, what's the ceremony going to be like? Can you tell me what's, give me a brief description of the ceremony? What's it going to involve?
Tom, can you answer his question?
Yes, this is jointly sponsored by the Town D E I Committee. Jenny Kravitz is organizing it. She's got a speaker lined up. And then I think there'll be a number of other speakers representing different Indigenous people communities. That block of time is a little bit longer than it'll actually be. It's probably going to be early afternoon, might last an hour. And the rain location will be inside the First Parish Church Fellowship Hall.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. We had a motion in a second, so all those in favor, Scott?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Our special town meeting. When we set this time and place for the special town meeting at our last meeting, we set it for Saturday, October 16th, at 10 o'clock in the morning. Subsequent, we learned that that's the same day that the PSATs are being given at Westford Academy. And, you know, obviously, a couple of concerns. One, you know, whether, you know, the noise and the intercom, et cetera, from town, special town meeting would interfere with the kids' testing. And also, you know, sort of logistics in terms of, you know, parking, people coming and going, et cetera. So our moderator, after a discussion with, I believe, the superintendent and Jim Antonelli and Jody, has suggested that we change the start time till 1:00 in the afternoon, which will allow for the PSATs to have been completed, the kids to have left or their parents who are coming to pick them up to have left. And then still give us what the moderator and I think we all believe is sufficient time to get through special town meeting, whose, I believe, the warrant articles are now down to nine or 10. So that's the reasoning behind that. Angela, do you want to add anything to that? Okay. So any questions or comments or concerns? Anita?
I just have a question about the process of how we figured out how to use the WA field. And if there was something that, like a kink in the process, Jody, that you might have been able to figure out so that we can prevent something like this next time? Like, who's in charge of the field, I guess, is my ultimate question.
So can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay, so I did reach out to Chris Chu and Jim Antonelli about three weeks before the request was made because I had a feeling this might be happening. And they both felt that that was fine. And so they gave, they said yes. And then a few days before your meeting, I did reach out again and asked them if we were still fine for Saturday at 10:00 a.m. And they both said yes, they would accommodate us. I think what happened after the board voted is a resident brought up that that was the same day as PSATs. And I think then they reconsidered. So we did try to follow the process, but for some reason, it just didn't work out quite right, so.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, seeing none. Is there a motion to change special town meeting to 1:00 p.m. on Saturday, October 16th?
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, Anita?
Aye.
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Let's get this out as soon as possible so that people know. I know that the moderator has already put something up on, or has recorded something with Westford CAT. But let's get it up on CAT on the town website and, you know, just announce it all over the place so everybody knows. Okay, thank you. All right. Our 10:05 p.m., not p.m., our 10:05 a.m. item, which is a request to use ARPA funds for the following purposes: to apply $456,708 in funding for the recreational enterprise fund, and also then to fund the training for the firefighters. So I don't know, Dan or Jody, whomever is doing this, let's start with the recreation enterprise.
Sure. Okay, so during the budgeting process in FY '21, or actually during FY '21, the Recreation Enterprise WPC After-School Program was discontinued for most of the year. It was brought back in May, but it only brought in $10,000, give or take, for the entire fiscal year. In past years, it's bringing closer to a million. So the Department of Revenue does not like to authorize increases in revenue without justification from current data. So that's what we had to do this year to kind of bridge this deficit. So working with Jim Dwayne, based on current enrollment numbers, we actually have 150 kids enrolled in the after-school program, which is very promising. In the first session, they've taken in $115,800 through September 8th, which is also great. So that extrapolate throughout the year is approximately $501,000, which is good. It's not quite to the full $900,000, but the D O R was comfortable with that projection at this point. So like we did last year, we do have to bridge that gap so that the program can run. So what we're asking to do is apply one-time funds from ARPA to bridge that gap so we can set a tax rate. We do have the option of using things like free cash or something else like that. But ARPA seems like a great use of the funds since this is lost revenue, and that was one of the purposes for those funds.
Questions? Anita, and then Scott?
No, I understand that it makes sense to use the ARPA funds for this because this is directly a COVID-related expense or loss. But I have a question, I guess, in general about the projections and, you know, if we should think in the future when we're making those projections about kind of like what enrollment could look like, right? So I know one of the options is to take this to town meeting and look at, you know, the operating budget or whether or not to use free cash. But I was just wondering if, like, would it make sense to look at the operating budget amount at town meeting and then come back and see whether or not to use ARPA? You know, would that make sense or not?
That might be...
Dan or Jody, do you want to answer that?
Want me to?
Well, yeah, I mean, I think, I guess, yeah, it's, to me, it's kind of philosophical, too. We do have the ARPA funds, and this is the primary reason. And we have a whole slew of other ideas of what is, how to spend that. But so it's really up to the board whether you want to spend those funds for this missing revenue or whether you want to take it to town meeting and have a discussion and fund it through free cash. But I don't know if you have anything else to add?
Yeah, you know, with COVID, recreation, I think, was the hardest-hit department. And trying to project what programs will be successful and what won't is very difficult. So by reducing their budget, we could run some issues where they could have run a program and generated revenue, but instead, they couldn't run it because they don't have the appropriation. So yeah, this is the trickiest year just coming out of a shutdown. So I think next year, we'll have better information to actually make better projections. But, you know, as a one-time appropriation, I think this would fix it immediately so we can set a tax rate after special town meeting.
But I also think when you go about, which I believe October 12th, you're going to talk about ARPA funds. In my mind, if you're not using it to replace lost revenue due to COVID, but we're using it for lots of other things, that's, in my mind, I know it's your decision, it doesn't really make sense if that's the purpose, the first purpose for giving it to us, but yet we use it for all sorts of other things. That's how we feel, but it's obviously up to you all.
Anita, go ahead.
Yeah, just to clarify, so I mean, I agree with using ARPA funds for the project loss, but, you know, related to COVID, I understand that. But I was just trying to look at the amount because we did have to backfill last time, right? And then I was just, I understand your point, Dan, of kind of like coming straight out of this. We don't really know, you know, what, how to project it, it's really difficult. But I was just thinking about like the end amount. But anyways, I understand what you're saying, thank you.
Okay. Scott, I believe you had a question?
Actually, just, which is that of all the things we want to do, it's the most directly tied to the purpose of ARPA. So it makes great sense to do it.
Okay. Any other questions?
I have a question.
Okay, I don't...
I have a question.
Yep.
Since we're backfilling, and they have, say they have a really successful program, does some of this money come back to the general fund?
That's a great question. So what happens is, once we transfer the funds to the Recreation Enterprise, it stays there. However, historically, they've had a general fund subsidy that we can look at in future years and possibly have them apply retained earnings. And that way, we can recoup some of these funds back to the general fund if it was excess than what they needed. So it's more of a long-term sort of recoupment.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, any other questions?
Andrea, you have two people with their hands up in the attendees, Valerie Young and Christina Green.
Okay. So thanks, Scott. So Valerie, do you want to ask your question?
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to better understand, I guess, what other options there are. You know, Dan just mentioned the, I already forgot the name of it, retained earnings, to better understand what's available there instead. Because while I understand the process, like the term lost revenue, to me, that almost feels more of like an unplanned loss in future revenue. And when I talk to parents of kind of kids with my age group, a lot of them have figured out how to get through last year with the weird school schedule and, you know, don't expect to need, like basically, if they figured out how to work from home with their kids home most of the day, then, you know, covering from 3:00 to 5:00 becomes less of an issue, 3:00 to 5:00 p.m., right? So I think this is almost, the after-school program might need some adjusting because the projection might not ever go back to what was pre-COVID. And filling this hole is hard to evaluate without knowing kind of the bigger picture that we, you know, and I know we talk about a more inclusive process to look at involving community input and different boards and different departments for the larger list of ARPA ideas. And so I think evaluating this on its own is really hard without kind of having that other process happen. Thank you.
Dan or Jody, do you want to answer that, please?
Yeah.
Well, one is, it's time-sensitive. We need to know this by next month. So to go through an entire inclusion process would be too late for this. We'd end up having to use free cash or just reducing the budget, too. So that was the urgency behind this request.
Jody, have any, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, can you also speak to enrollment right now, Dan?
Enrollment, so with 150 children, that's a strong start. I know some parents, they probably won't have their children coming back because they may be working from home now, which is, you know, sort of the new normal for some people. But, you know, people do depend on this program, too, to, you know, so they can go back to work into the office. So it's been greatly used over the years. In past years, this program has contributed to the general fund. Although there was a small general fund subsidy, if we had done away with the program, because they cover portions of indirect costs for a bunch of salaries and retirement, it actually has generated budget capacity for the general fund. So I think the goal is to get this program back up and running to where it was at that point and then, you know, make adjustments along the way as we go. So, you know, it's not, we're not applying all these one-time funds in the future.
I also think when we do the 23 budget and the hearings, I think we certainly can delve into recreation a little deeper if the board wants us to and what's going on and what our projections are. We can certainly, you know, get focused on, more focused on it there. But I don't know if Valerie, if you know this, but we did furlough 12 recreation employees for several months last fall, last spring. And actually, Jim Dwayne, the department head, did a fantastic job of managing his department and actually ended up in pretty good shape for what he had to deal with. So anyway, this is up to the board, obviously, but we're just recommending it because it seemed to fit in what the ARPA funds were intended for.
Okay. Christina, I see you have your hand up, too.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep.
Yes. So my question with this is, I completely understand using ARPA funds to plug a COVID-related revenue loss that you couldn't have done anything about. But I sort of feel like this is a future loss, I think, like Valerie said. And so what are we doing to mitigate that loss? Speaking for the taxpayers, I have a hard time coming into this knowing we're going to lose $450,000 and not knowing what's being done to prevent that or minimize that. So can somebody explain that part to me?
So I don't think we're going to lose $450,000. This is a requirement from the Department of Revenue that, you know, we gave them a projection based on enrollment right now that we need to be conservative in setting that tax rate. So I think we'll, we're not going to spend the entire budget, most likely, if the enrollment doesn't increase because we don't need as many kids and whatnot there. It's just, it's a big unknown at this point, how that's going to play out throughout the year. So it's, I don't think it's going to be an operating loss of 450. This is just getting it so we can balance the budget.
Right, and I, what I would say is, you know, traditionally, this program brought in $1 million a year. And we have not been advised by the Select Board that they want to reduce or discontinue the program. So I guess it's our hope that COVID gets under control and we go back to the robust programming that we have offered the town, you know, for the past decade. So, but again, yeah.
I guess, is what I'm hearing that, I understand that because of the D O R and because of what we estimated for revenue, I understand that the number right now is 450. I completely understand that. I guess, is what I'm hearing is that Jim Dwayne is going to be making adjustments so that hopefully we don't lose that whole 450 and some of that goes to Rec Enterprise retained earnings at the end of the year?
Yeah, so Jim is excellent at managing the budget. He only spends what he needs to to have the required staffing on-site. They made other adjustments, like they don't offer snacks at the after-school program anymore to save some money and whatnot. And I have complete faith that he's going to do well with what we've given him because he does manage this budget so closely.
And I guess I would also add that I have heard from many parents that want this program, and they were upset when we didn't offer it, when our enrollment was very low and we decided to discontinue it, I believe, last fall. And there were a lot of people very upset because they did not have options for their children that were as affordable as this. So I definitely think there's a need out there. I think it just depends where we go with COVID on what the future looks like. But we can certainly have a lot of discussions about that as we move forward.
And I think, following up what Dan said, is that, you know, as we, as we look at, you know, what's, what happens, you know, in the next, you know, quarter or two with, with the after-school program and recreation, if there are adjustments that need to be made, whether it's, you know, staffing or programming or whatever, as we go into fiscal year 23 budgeting, obviously, we're going to have to look at those and consider those.
Andrea, you have a follow-up question from Valerie?
Her hand is not up on my screen, but go ahead, Valerie.
Oh, I'm sorry, I typed it. I just, there was a question, in part of my longer question about, just about what the using retained earnings impact would be.
Oh, okay. Dan, can you explain to Valerie what, you know, retained earnings are and that, you know, we actually don't have them right now to use?
Sure. We just got certified all the free cash retained earnings. Recreation has about $200,000 in retained earnings. You know, as a rule of thumb, we want about 25% of the operating budget left behind in retained earnings, so we're well below that figure. You know, if they create more retained earnings this year, if there's an adjustment being made next year, I'm hoping we can use those rather than request one-time funds. But right now, it's still pretty low from a comfort standpoint of where they're operating to use those funds to offset this.
Okay. Eric, I don't see any other questions, are there any?
No, there's not.
Okay, thank you. All right. So with that, not seeing any, is there a motion to authorize the use of ARPA funds to cover the recreational enterprise fund?
So moved.
Second?
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All right, all those in favor, Scott?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Aye. All right. The next item is to allocate approximately $100,000 over a three-year period to compensate EMTs and paramedics for hours worked during mandatory continuing education and to provide funding for classes and other related training expenses for fiscal year 2022 to fiscal year 24. I guess, Jody, do you want to just update everyone, explain this?
Sure, so we have a tentative agreement with the firefighters for their next, for their three-year contract, which does include 22 that we're in right now. And basically, if you're an EMT, which all of ours are at least an EMT, and/or a paramedic, which we have roughly 16, I think, right now, you have to have training every two years. You have to be recertified for all those medical procedures that you can do. And we have tried to have our firefighter, paramedics conduct this training mostly during working hours. But it is very difficult because I think this year, we've had 1,963 ambulance calls. And certainly, some days, and I do send this to the board, we'll get 13 calls, 17 calls in a day. So to sit these guys down and try to train them during the workday is extremely difficult. And they're leaving in the middle of learning how to intubate someone. And that's not a good idea if you kind of learn that on a, you know, hazardous, or, I can't think of the...
Haphazard.
Thank you. I had FinCon last night, I'm still a little tired, but haphazard manners. So what we would like to do is to take, set aside about $100,000 for three years to be able to train them somewhat, not every class, but somewhat outside of working hours so that they can sit and have consistent training and not be pulled off into an ambulance in the middle of it. This is something most towns do cover anyway, we have never done it. So we would like to use ARPA funds, which, again, these guys are the ones that have been taking everybody to the hospital by ambulance. They've been fantastic all through COVID. And we'd like to allow them to get some training outside of the training room in the fire station. So we think they'll be better trained, and that would be a commitment that we would be making to them.
Any questions or comments from the board? Scott?
Just a comment, I mean, as Jay mentioned, that the run volume is also focused on day hours. We've got a larger town population, and if it's a lecture class, you have to leave the middle of it. But if you're doing practicals, you just can't pick it up and run away and come back again. So I think this is a smart thing to do to get the professionals trained correctly.
Yeah, I agree.
Tom?
I just agreeing with Scott in terms of, is this an appropriate use of ARPA funds? I think the fact that because we're in challenging times and we need the full focus of our first responders responding to constituents in town, and we want to move the training outside the workday, and that's basically what this money is for, I just, I think it's a good idea and I think it is an appropriate use of ARPA funds.
Any other comments from the board? Okay, I don't see any, and I don't see any questions from the audience. So with that, is there a motion to approve to allocate approximately $100,000 over the next three years to compensate the EMTs and paramedics for hours worked during mandatory continuing education and to provide funding for classes and other related training expenses?
So moved.
Removed.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, Anita, John?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you.
Andrea, can I ask a question real quick related to this topic? So those of you who are following this know we're going to enter a transparent and public process about how we're using the ARPA funds, and that will go on over some periods of weeks. I guess my question is sort of a process question. I know the schools are looking at some things related to testing. If they felt they had an urgent request, is the right process for them to basically send a memo like we saw from Dan on these two issues and request an agenda spot during a Select Board meeting?
Yes, definitely.
Okay, I know Chris Sanders is out there, I don't know if Chris, if you have any other questions about that, but I know you're, you're working hard, thinking of good ways to keep staff and students safe.
Actually, he was out here, it looks like he's not here anymore. He might have had to not, to not... He might have had to, to, not to, to leave us. But I know Valerie is still out there. So, but yes, if, if that's something that, you know, the schools feel they need, then they should, they should do that.
Okay, thanks Andrea.
Yep. And also, it doesn't just go for the schools, I should, I should point that out. If there's, you know, any department in town that feels that they, you know, need funds, funding immediately, they should bring it to our attention. Okay. The next, under old business and new business, I guess, the first item concerning Woodward and Kern is now moved because I guess the, the cell phone provider has moved on to a different contractor. So this Woodward and Kern is no longer being considered, so we can move on from this. And then our last item is a request from the Economic Development Committee to appoint David Flanagan as an alternate member for a term expiring on June 30th, 2024. Is there a motion to appoint?
Don't move.
Don't move.
Second?
Second.
All those, all those in favor, Tom?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Aye. All right. That concludes our meeting of this morning, unless anybody has anything else. So everybody, thank you all. Anita, I'm sorry.
There's a question that came in from Christina Green. I don't know if you saw it, but she's asking if she can, if there can be an update from Jim Dwayne in a few months on the Recreation.
Yes.
Andrea?
Yep.
I would suggest that we do that as part of the budget process. Does that make sense?
Right, that makes sense.
Or you want something separate?
Right, no, that makes sense.
Yeah, so that's, I will prepare him for that.
All right. Seeing nothing else, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, just raise your hands. All right. We are adjourned, thank you all very much, appreciate your time. Everybody have a nice weekend and we'll see you Tuesday night.